All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think it's the bewitching hour. According to my clock, it's 3 o'clock. According to the clock here, we're already five minutes behind. So we're always a little ahead. So just want to make sure that we spend enough time with each other. Give us some quality time together. Want to thank each and every one of you for coming out today. This, as you see on our screen, is actually our fifth annual town hall discussion. And it does not feel like it's been five years since we've moved into having these community-wide engagements. Typically, where you're focused on a substantive issue that we want to make sure that we share with you as community members, get your feedback. That's what we're going to be doing today. It is interesting that we're moving into our new iteration of our strategic plan for Central Ohio Technical College. Hopefully, you all have a copy. If you don't have, we have those outside for you. That's what we want to focus on is where is the vision of the college? Where is it going? What does that mean to our friends and colleagues here in Koshockton? But what does that also mean to this specific facility? So we're going to spend about 15, 20 minutes kind of going over the generalities of the new strategic plan. What's our focus? What's our vision over this next five-year iteration? I'm actually in my sixth year as the president now. And that's gone so very quickly. COVID notwithstanding, it's been a nice run. I really enjoyed most of it. But that means it is time for a new iteration of the vision, of the strategic design. Where are we going? How are we going to get there? What are we looking at together? But it is a critical issue that we're going to spend some time on is what does that mean here in Koshockton and specifically for this facility as well? So we'll get this started here. If you remember, our town halls are really designed to engage conversation and to make sure that we hear from you as well. Yes, I'm going to give you some upfront discussion topics and some information, but we want to make sure that this is a two-way give and take, that we hear from you, that you give your thoughts, your perspectives and opinions. But we'll start with some of what's now the mission, the vision of COTC in general. And this counts for all four of our campus locations. Remembering again, we do have a three-county service region and four campus locations. We serve Licking, Knox and Koshockton counties. We have physical representation in each one of those areas. Our mission has remained the same for 55 years. This has not deviated. It is who we are and what we do. We reaffirmed this with the board to meet the technical and education and training needs of students and employers in the area. It's very definitive. It's very distinct. It is who we are and what we do. Technical education. We are a technical college. Yes, we do transferable degree material, but the crux of who we are and what we do is technical education. Certificates, short-term degrees, associates, now moving even into the baccalaureate area. The vision is a little bit more expansive, and I want you to see this one because I appreciate it. We came up with this as the new strategic vision. Empowering lives through accessible education, accessible being very important, affordable, easy to engage, both in a physical and virtual environment. COTC aims to transform students and communities and advance regional workforce readiness. We are workforce engaged. That's what our bailiwick is. That's what we are trained to do. It's what our sacred mission is, and we will continue to move that forward. What are the hallmarks of COTC as we've gone through a review of who we are and what we do and how we express ourselves? Not surprisingly, our first one you see there is exactly what we just talked about. It's a focus on technical education and affordability. The one thing that we never want any student to say is that my obstacle is how much it costs to go to college. Particularly here in this community, you were the forerunners and the frontrunners on providing affordable access. The Koshockton Promise was our very first promise program. It's now been replicated in Knox, but you initiated this. Students should not find the hardship of financing as their main reason not to attend. So focus on this technical education affordability, community and family atmosphere. We want people to be very comfortable here. We want them to feel a sense of connection. If they're struggling, they talk to people, that we engage with them upfront. We have exceptional faculty and staff. Our faculty are some of the most extraordinary individuals in their fields. Strong partnership with Ohio State University. For those of you who have been on our Newark campus, you know we are symbiotic in our relationship together. This is interesting. We had a conversation with all of the co-located regional campuses. And by state mandate, if you're a technical college and you actually have to be co-located with a four-year research institutions, basically they are branch campus system. We are the only ones that go into a cost-share relationship, not just co-location, where we share some facilities. We engage with our staffing in that structure. We share more than 80 staff members together with Ohio State. The next highest beyond us is five. So imagine when we talk about a strong connectivity, it is a very different relationship that we have than anywhere else in the state. And it works, and it works well, and allows us more opportunities to engage in our other regional networks. Strong student-centered support services and a focus on success. Coming out of COVID, we really delved deeply into this. Remember this part about community and family atmosphere? We found through some intense study that almost 15% to 20% of our students were not receiving any credits after their first semester, zero. They weren't successful in their coursework, and they were stopping out, dropping out, whatever that might be. We engaged in that holistically. We started to actually do surveying of all new students before they stepped foot on campus. Find out who you are. What are your issues? What are your needs? What are your obstacles? We've been able to cut that almost in half in a three-year cycle. So this is moving in the right direction, and we're very excited about that. Strong leadership and positive presence. We try to make sure that we're visible and connected to our communities of service. Small class sizes and favorable student ratio. Very important for us that we keep it a more intimate environment, but it also has to be functional. I can't have two students in my classroom because then I'm losing too much money. But we want to have 12, 14, 18 students at any given time. The values, as we researched within our communities, our faculty, our staff, our students, our sponsoring organizations, our communities that we serve, this is how they expressed what COTC means to them. That dependable expertise is the most critical. I have to understand that what I'm being taught, who I'm learning from, they actually have dependable, reliable, credible experiences in their field, and they're relaying that to me. We want to be dynamically engaged. We want, as we talked about, knowing who our students are and what they do. Inclusive and collaborative. We want to make sure that we're engaged with our communities of service. Unwavering integrity. We will always share and communicate what's happening, what's going on, what do we need, where are we going? Innovative excellence, trying to make sure that we know what's current in the field. You know, we started some new programming in our areas because we have to stay on top of this. There are times also we have to recognize when we're not meeting the needs of the current situation. Some of you may or may not know, we did a complete overhaul of our IT program. Information technology is very vastly different than where it was even five years ago. And we were still doing an awful lot of programming, and there's nothing wrong with programming. We all need to be able to do this. But many of you have also known, there's these things called AI and cybersecurity and those sorts of elements that we need to be very upfront on and understand and how to train our students on. So a complete overhaul of that program with a year cycle. And empathetic compassion. Our students, they struggle because they have lives. Almost, and you'll see some of this, the vast majority of our students, almost 80% of them work, and they are part-time students because they are taking care of themselves, their families, their communities, and we have to understand how to balance that with them. So we have goals in this new strategic plan. We've given you a little bit of the generalities, but we want to talk to you about the specificity. What are our goals and priorities in this process? We have four very concrete goals. The first one and the first priority, you won't be surprised, you'll see them here. Industry-aligned technical education. We have to make sure that we are versed and upfront and understand what's happening, what's going on, what are those needs. Even locally, we're having some very engaged conversations right now in the healthcare fields, talking to the partners at Genesis, parking to the regional health centers, making sure what are their needs, what are we producing, and can we produce them here? We're looking at some expansion of program areas in those healthcare fields. We really got into the whole respiratory therapy game this past year because we have found with our partners that coming out of COVID, huge need. And many of our partners were relying on traveling, traveling nurses, traveling associates, traveling therapists. They are expensive, expensive propositions, and you need to cultivate those in your own community. So that industry-aligned targeting became paramount into what we're doing. Collaborate closely with local businesses, stay attuned to regional employment trends and needs. Conduct a comprehensive analysis of our current academic programs. I just told you upfront, our IT program wasn't where it needed to be. We have to take a critical examination of all of our programs. And you know, the world has shifted. Now, OCF is here, and I didn't even know OCF was. OCF leads our engineering program. Many of you have heard of that small company that keeps getting in the news. I think it's called Intel. You know, they have shifted themselves. Intel probably won't open a process until 2030 to 2032. Well, there was a time that we were looking at 2025. There was a time that we were talking about this. But that network of understanding of what they do, advanced manufacturing of a different sort, what they do and that chips component, important, that's great. Semiconductor work is great. We've started to work in that field. Students are already finding pathways to other areas. We've expanded our engineering program, and they've done a great job. But we have to be connected to what's happening in each of those fields of study. We will enhance our existing academic programs, and we will find what is the need for something new. Some of you probably have seen in the news, the largest now hiring company that apparently the state has ever seen, this Andoril Group. Did you hear about this? Andoril, they do combat readiness. They do a lot of drone technology. Well, we dabbled in the drone field before. We're probably going to do more than dabble in it now. We have to find out who they are and what they need and what they're asking for, and then create those pathways to it. That might impact our friends and colleagues here and students in Koshockton. If that's something of interest to them and they have a connectivity to that, we'll provide that insight as well. So industry-aligned technical education makes sense to everyone? Then we move on to our student-centered support. We talked a little bit about this. We have to know our students. We have to know what they're doing, what their issues are, making sure if they have to step out, it's a step and not a dropout, that we help them find their way back, that we create our systems for that. Our student success network is huge now. It used to be small and marginal. All of our students have student success coaches that are assigned to them upon their start to the college. Very different orientation, but very important for us as well. That holistic advising, academic support, we provide obviously a wide array of scholarships and financial assistance. Finance is just one obstacle connection. If you're struggling to be like, I don't know where I'm sleeping tomorrow, that's an obstacle. That housing insecurity, food insecurities, we have a food pantry network on all of our campus locations. It's very important that we serve those needs. You'll see the partnership engagement and collaboration, very important. We're championing the commitment to a collaborative partnership between, as you heard, Ohio State University, but also our academic partners. I actually had a chance to meet with Mark here from the Koshockton City Schools District. We had a pre-meeting today to talk about some potential collaboration and innovative design. We're going to need to delve deeply with all of our partners of substance, making sure that we're meeting their needs. We know who they are, what's happening in their world order, what are we doing in connection to that? CCP continues to be a major factor. College Credit Plus, dual enrollment, students taking their academic work from the college while they're still in high school. That's actually about 42%, is that correct? Is there about 42% of our overall student population? We're back to a very viable overall student network. We're up to about 3,200 students. We started pre-pandemic at about 3,450, so we're almost back to where we were. We took 20% of our students hit during that timeframe. Two and a half years, we lost 20% of our students, rebuilding robustly. We want to do it both in our College Credit Plus with our high school partners and with traditional students, working adults. We have to know exactly who they are and how to get to them. And then finally, you'll see the effectiveness and financial sustainability. As any business, and we are a business, we're a business of higher education. We try to see ourselves as altruistic because we need to be, but we have to keep our doors open. Every one of our elements of an effective financial plan connect to all of our service regions. We're implementing a college multi-year plan to eliminate the structural deficit. I told you that over COVID, 20% loss. We chose not to fire, not to let go, not to cancel any academic programs without 20% of our student population. Think about your business. You lost 20% of your customers, but you don't change your program. We gave ourselves a five-year window to rebuild. And David Brohart, who is here from our business and finance area, created a system, it was genius in many ways, of saying incrementally, we're going to have to grow back into that. We've met that challenge thus far, and we're very pleased about it. But we're starting from a deficit budget every year. Giving ourselves a half a million dollars to make up for, so we have to have more students to engage in that. But so far, so good, we're knocking on proverbial wood right now. So that was huge. We want to expand our moment through proactive recruitment strategies, so on and so forth. For our extended campuses, for Koshockton, reduce the Koshockton campus footprint, allowing for reallocation of resources while continuing to effectively serve the Koshockton community. We're going to get into this much more robustly and deeply. But let me just put it out here. You all are in this building. This is a 45,000 square foot building. It is beautiful. It's a lovely center. We have right now 82 students in this building. 45,000 square feet for 82 individuals. We have five people that work here. This is where they're located. Imagine the cost containment on that to keep the lights on, the doors open, people, staffing, faculty in here for 82 individuals. That's roughly, we're giving you 500 square feet per person. And that doesn't necess, it's not a sustainable network. So we're going to talk about that. What does that mean to us here? Hey, we're looking at all of that on all of our campus locations. In Knox, we have somewhat of a similar capacity. Think about that building being 30,000 square feet, so about a third less than this. We have about 160 students that attend on that site. We have about 500 students that come from the Knox County community, but most of them aren't on that physical location. Here, I told you there are 82. We have about 200 students that come from the Koshockton County, but they're not coming physically here. So and then when we look at Pataskoala, unfortunately, Pataskoala is at the other end of the spectrum. Pataskoala is a 15,000 square foot building, so imagine a third of this. And imagine having 400 students in there. So we've actually hit capacity there. We can't fit any more students in there. So it was funny, I was talking to Mark earlier about this. If I could literally pick this up and swap it with Pataskoala, we'd be fine, and we'd be good on both ends of that spectrum. But that doesn't work that way. So we're looking at all of those critical cost containment factors. We are transitioning to a college enterprise resource planning system. That's much more into the weeds than you need to know, but it's suffice to say an expensive proposition. It's all IT infrastructure. It's all things that we have to plan for and plan ahead to do. So these are, as we talked about, each one, party one, two, and they're beautiful pictures, by the way. I love those pictures. And three, four, effectiveness and financial sustainability. How are we going to measure that? How are we actually knowing? Are we hitting these target goals? Our KPIs, our key performance indicators, not going to surprise you. Enrollment. We have been very successful over the last three years of being one of the fastest-growing institutions, two-year institutions in the state. That helps us in budgetary times. But for a three-year cycle is how we're funded. The previous three years were crap, so we were one of the most underperforming because we were experiential in our nature. We've rebounded significantly, but it takes a while to catch up to that. We want to see the enrollment continue. College Credit Plus matriculation. I told you about 42% or so of our students are in College Credit Plus. Right now, only about 7% of those individuals continue with COTC when they are done at high school. We'd love to see that be about 20% because that helps, it helps us certainly financially, but we find the students finish a degree program much more robustly if they do. Our share of enrollment within degree-seeking students at all Ohio's two-year colleges, our retention mechanism, graduation rates, one-year post-graduation employment. This is a point of pride for us. I've shared this with you before. I'm going to share it again. We're actually one of the highest, if not the highest, of all 22 two-year colleges in the state with students being employed in their field within six months of graduation. That's a metrics that the state is starting to measure, and they're starting to reward. Well, we're trumpeting that loud and clear because most of our students are candidly employed before they graduate because they're in such high-demand areas. If you're in any healthcare field, they're vetting you as you're going through your clinical experiences, and they're actually saying, so Emily, I would love for you to be here as part of the Koshockton Regional Network. Would you like to work here? But I'm also at Licking Memorial Hospital studying the same thing to you, and I have a $5,000 signing bonus. So those are high-class problems and issues. We need to make sure we capture that and market that. And finally, financial viability. All right, that's a quick synopsis of our new investment and our catalyst in action. And remember, COTC are, we are the catalyst because our students are change agents. That's an overview of the strategic plan. Let's delve deeper in Koshockton. What does that mean here? We talked about viability, financial sustainability, this facility, our career and academic offerings. Let's delve a little bit higher and deeper here. Let me give you a quick history to make sure that we're all on the same page. We started offering classes within the Koshockton community shortly after the college was established. We were established in 1971. In 1977, we began offering classes at the Koshockton High School. So we were in the high school itself, offering classes typically in the evenings. As soon as 1986, the Koshockton County Vocational School Board first discussed COTC's request to use space on a one-year trial basis. In 2001, we had a focus group that unanimously, you see it, expressed the need for a local access to higher education. In 2002, received a half a million dollar Appalachian Technology and Workforce Grant in order to establish some physical tangible representation of a workforce engagement center. You see in September of 2002, a newly appointed Koshockton Advisory Board met for the first time. We had an advisory board up until five years ago and shifted our focus into these open centers. In 2003, the Koshockton Educational Center opened in the shops at Kenwood. Do you all know where this is? It's next to the dialysis center. It was an interesting ride to get to the campus because everybody was doing their dialysis, but we actually offered, helped staff some of that program as well. So now, ladies and gentlemen, when we were at the Kenwood Center, that size and scope was basically adjacent to our student population. The amount of students that we had here in Koshockton was pretty much equated to how big that was. In 2006, a capital campaign concludes with a $5 million raised for our access point here. So we started to move here. Construction begins in Montgomery Hall in 2007. We opened our doors here in 2008 at this physical center. So think about that. That's basically about a 17-year run in this physical space. Now, the space that we were in in Kenwood. Brian, how big is that? Is it like 8,000 square feet?
It's under 10,000.
So imagine that we went from approximately, we'll even say 10,000 square feet, okay, to this facility, which is 45,000 square feet. If you actually just do the math in your head, we had roughly 150 to 200 students at any given time at Kenwood. The amount of students that we need here is roughly 500 to 600. Right now, we have 82. So that's where the enrollment runs that we look at. If you look at the college overall enrollment seed in 2020, that was really starting to be the cusp of the whole COVID issue, that we dipped all the way down to 2561. We are rebounding. We're upwards of where we needed to be. We still have some growth to go. We want to hit about that 3,400, 3,500 in the fall establishment. You can see the degree-seeking and those non-degree, those are College Credit Plus-related. Our enrollments by location, you see the number of students. COVID really shifted. A lot of people taking courses online and making that their primary modality. Most of our students here in Koshockton are taking online-related courses. If you see how many we have at each one, in online, 1,500. At Newark, 1,300. High school students, 798, almost 800. At Pataskoala, 359. Knox, 120. Koshockton, 83. The enrollment at the Koshockton campus, you can see the height that, at our height, we were 187 here in this building. We took it all the way down to 52. That was a dramatic shift. We rebuilt some. You can see from 52 to 82, 30 students is, in the positive, we appreciate that, but it is 82. And we don't, there's no way we're going to reach a capacity of 600 students in today's environment and climate. You can see our course counts have shifted. They're almost decreased by, actually even more than half of what our offerings. You can see our primary offerings are in health, nursing and engineering. If you remember, we also conducted needs assessment of all of our communities of service. The three areas of significance for Koshockton that are viable in terms of workforce connection, health, engineering and IT. Those are the three significant areas. There'll be some smaller subsets. One of the things that we've talked about, and we've seen this in action, there are critical needs on variable time periods. When we talk about things like the police, that we need to do a police academy here once every three to four years because then there's rejuvenation and reassessment. Same thing for things like early childhood education. You don't need them every year because there's not a critical enough mass, but you need them consistently on a rotating basis. But on an average annual basis, health, engineering and IT are the one areas of significant concentration and opportunity. Here again, you can see how does Koshockton County students, how do they access COTC? At the campus itself, you can see there, 61 at this, was at this time last year that we looked at that. There were 61, six of the students were on our Knox campus. There were 58 on Newark. One person went to Pataskoala. We're not quite sure why, but they did. That's where they wanted to be. 160 are online, 52 were in the high school setting. So an unduplicated headcount meant about 230 students engaging with us at any given time. Again, some of the initiatives that we've engaged in to rebuild some of that connection, bringing in different types of programs of opportunity, building them here, ensuring that there was a critical enough mass to keep that process moving. Everything from phlebotomy, LPN pathways, electrical engineering certificates. Our friends at the Koshockton Chamber, who we love very much, they found a new home and a very nice one. We appreciate that. They were a partner in this process. They didn't have a very big space. So that was just one group that was here that provided more opportunity of space for us as well. We have explored a building lease partnership with the Career Center. That didn't necessarily work out because they need some specificity and security related to their student population. Offered the police academy. It did not run, but then it did. We were able to rebuild and work directly with some of our providers here, so we were able to run that. Remember, on off-cycle, we should be able to connect on those. All right, so let's talk about this moving forward together. Right now, what we're doing is looking at how do we reduce our footprint here? The building is just too big for us. And at its height, if we can get up to 300 students, we can do that in two floors here, not four. This is 45,000 square feet. If you look at what we really need right now, of the four floors, we need basically one and three-quarters. We need the first floor and three-quarters of this floor. The remaining part of this, the third and fourth floors, can be created into something new. We're looking at the opportunity to re-envision. Brandon Hess is a partner within the Shay Hess Real Estate. It's a commercial real estate firm. We have contracted with them to look at what can we do with this physical facility? Brandon knows this community. They actually are working with the warehouse right now, the restaurant, looking at the viability and portability of that. We've asked them to do a couple of different things with and for us. We are looking at three different options within this construct. A is sell the whole property outright, that we look at a one potential buyer, that Emily decides she wants to create this as an elder care facility and wants to buy this from the institution and would say, I'm ready to give you $6 million today. That's what it is valued at, just so you know. It's a $6 million valuation. If she said that to us, we would entertain that discussion. We would talk about that. Is that something we're ready to do? If so, then what we would do is take our money and go relocate somewhere else in Koshockton. So we will never leave the community. We may just not be physically here at this center. That candidly of our three options is option number three to us. That is the least desirable. Now, if Emily gives me $6 million, that will be hard for me to turn down. But that is not what we're looking forward as our main point of access. The second one you see is a lease option that we're going to go and say that Marion. Marion is an entrepreneur, and she's like, I would like to be a landlord. I would like to buy this building, but I I would like to buy this building, but I would like to lease part of it back to COTC. Only what they really need, that one and three-quarters floors. Then we would do that with you. Marion now owns the building, but we lease from her. And she overall ministers whatever else she wants in the building. That's up to you. But we would be a tenant in that process. That is the second, and the second most desirable aspect for us. The third option is something that candidly, we didn't really know about until we started to delve more into this. Condom minimizing. Can we create multiple partners that own part of this facility together simultaneously? Candidly, we want to be the largest partner. We want to own one and three-quarters of the building. Other people, so John. John decides he wants to open an insurance agency. And he's looking for a beautiful center, and Roscoe Village would be a great place. He wants to own a slice of this, that he can build his operation guide there. He owns 1/12 of this building now. He has a part on the third floor, say a quarter of that space. So he is a co-owner of this with us. It's like a condo, a condo association. So each of us owns a space and a piece of that. John decides that he wants to open, he wants to build two apartments upstairs and rent those out. He could own a piece of that with us and can do that. This could be a multifaceted engagement. Think of a multi-use center. We've introduced this concept to some of our investors who actually helped create this center with us. And it was interesting, the amount of people who immediately went to more of what we talked about with John, that apartment-style opportunities here, living here full-time, was a very interesting concept and an interesting desire. Now, I'm going to say if Josie approaches us and says, that's what we would like to do, I do not want to be a real estate investor. Josie would need to be that real estate investor. If she wants to build apartments here, she would basically be a partner in the overall ownership of this. That is what we'd love to see candidly, that we maintain our presence physically here, where we're already are, we're known, we've already have an established presence, that people understand where we are, and we don't have to get up and go anywhere, candidly. That would be most ideal. But ladies and gentlemen, make no bones about it, we're exploring all of them simultaneously. And we will look at all of them simultaneously. One fourth option that's not on here, and we always start with that, we may do nothing. If there isn't anyone that's out there who has interest in any of those three, we could theoretically continue to do what we're doing. It is not a very good, responsible economic plan. We've been doing this now for 17 years and have never hit. David, are we talking roughly about $400,000 a year?
Facility costs.
Yeah. Of sheer facility cost alone, we lose about $400,000 a year. So that's just not smart use of effective management of our resources. So we're looking at each one of these. We are asking you, as community members, to help us in this endeavor. Think about this yourself. Think about this with the people that you live with and work with every day. This may be of interest to, we don't know who might be interested in this. Now, I also need to clarify one thing. This isn't just a free-for-all, so we use this. If a gentleman's club said they wanted to come in and work on the fourth floor, we're probably not going to entertain that notion. And we have a responsibility with the Roscoe Village Association, that they actually have a say on who comes in this as well. A vaping store is not going to come up here. This is just not who we are. That's not what it's all about. But all the things that we aforementioned could be a viable option. And we would exercise a discretion and a lot of collaboration, a lot of conversation, a lot of planning with that as well. So does that make a little more sense, what we're looking at in size and scope? I wanted to show you all as well. So here's the actual layout of what's in this building. So a lot of people don't know exactly what's on each floor. The first floor, and that's the basement entrance, the, what we call the first floor, is 14,600 square feet. It's where we have most of our infrastructure. If you see our lab components, our nursing, health lab and such, it's all physically built in there. And that's a lot of hard fixed cost. If we don't have to move that, that would be ideal. That would be fantastic. The second floor, which is what we're on now, also is about 14,600 square feet. This community room that we're in right now is not a requirement for us. The lobby, the parlor area, those were, are not necessarily something that we have to have. That could be something that is offered to another third party within that design. The third floor is 8,800 square feet. And then the fourth floor is 7,200, for, as you see, that total 45,200 square feet. What, if you remember what this building started as, as a hotel, it was very easily parceled up and out. So if, and now I'm going to go and bother Cassie here, if Cassie comes back and says, yes, I'm interested in this whole apartment-style thing, it is much easier to reconstruct this building because of what it was. And if you remember, they were individual rooms that had individual water systems. There were elevators on both sides of the building, so on and so forth. So there are, this is a much easier building to rethink or re-envision in a multi-use process. We're doing some of the same sort of vision in our Knox County to see about that. That building does not allow itself nearly as easy. It was a movie theater. So if you imagine taking a movie theater and re-envisioning that, it wasn't like a hotel that had multiple rooms and such already invested in it. So this, you can see the physical layout. This is the first floor. Again, if, and if we can stay here, we'd like to maintain our presence here because that's where most of our academic delivery is really concentrated and happening significantly. And if you remember, this is a lot of administrative office spaces as well, so our academic admissions, advising staff, our facility staff, they're all working from this process. But it was reminded to us that there was an elevator shaft on the other side of that building. So you could reconstitute that and actually cordon off certain parts of it, open up certain floors, close certain floors. The second floor, which we are on now, you get a sense of the whole entirety of the layout. We're over here, as you see, this is where we do have academic courses, classes, some of our lab systems as well. David, anything in particular outside of that on the second floor?
No, we need, we need some classroom space beyond the first floor, and whether that happens on the second floor or fourth.
Yes.
Probably how you get students around with the partners is probably more important.
And that's a good point. We're saying the first and second, we don't really have to be on the second. It's just adjacency makes it easier. But if, if somebody said, I want this whole second floor, you can move your operation up to the third floor. Theoretically, that could happen. That's the third floor itself right now. You see that it's a smaller footprint, just in terms of usable space, but there are individual rooms already, as you see, more designed in classroom spaces. And the fourth floor is pretty much identical to that process as well. The good thing I can tell you about the college is we maintain this structure at its highest rate. There's no deferred maintenance here. It isn't like, oh boy, this is a shanty that we're trying to unload. We keep it in nice condition, but there's an expense to that process as well. But if somebody was looking at it, it isn't going to be like, well, what am I buying? As my wife said, when we were looking at a place at the lake, it's a shack? No, this is not a shack. This is a nice, nice, well-maintained facility. All right, so that's a lot of me talking at you. And Jackie, I'm actually right on time. So I said we'd do about 45 minutes of presentation, of giving information out. But now we want to have some conversation with you. You've heard this overall design, where we are, how, and why. What we're looking to do, we're looking for your responses, your reactions, your thoughts, your perspectives. What do we need to do? Who do we need to talk to? What other things do we need to consider? We just want to hear directly from you as we move this process forward. And it can be about anything that we talked about today, certainly, obviously, the building, but anything that you heard about as well. And there's no right or wrong. This is an open forum for all of us now. I think I know almost all of you individually, so I know you're nice people. You won't be too harsh in that process, but everything is open for conversation. Ma'am.
I, I wonder if, if you were to lease part of the building to someone else, would you consider sharing staff, like reception staff or something of that nature?
That's a great question. And Mindy, the answer is yes. We would look at all those viable. It's interesting because actually in our Knox campus, we had a third-party education group who were looking at some of the space there, same exact thing. Could we share our front desk reception area, so not having to replicate or duplicate? Could they fill some of that void for us in some of those ways too? So yes, we would entertain that notion. And that's why we would look at the whole of whatever anyone is coming to bring to the table and see if it's a mutually beneficial arrangement. So yes, the answer is absolutely yes. I know you are. You're not that quiet of a group. I know you're thinking, you're processing. You're thinking about all what you heard today.
What was prices, 6 million is that what you're saying?
That, yes, yes. That's what it has been valued at. Now, again, our, we're not here to make money. That is not at all what we're here to do. We are here to, we're a nonprofit organization, and we reinvest that money back into wherever we go or through the network of our system. You know, if we go to a place that costs 3 million, we'd look at putting academic alignment into some of that money as well. So right now, that's what, which is not a bad price, and I think it's a fair and equitable component of where, where the market is. It's, it's, again, I go back to, it's a nice damn building. It really is. It's a really nice physical center, so it could be utilized in multiple venues and possibilities.
So I guess my follow-up question is, when you renovated, it's been a while since I've been on the third and fourth floor. Those were renovated to be classrooms, not, like, you know, they're not hotels?
Not currently, no.
And I saw the company and all that stuff was changed way back when.
It was, it was. Now, we're trying to be a little proactive. We have engaged with a construction firm to have them doing an analysis of the building. What if, if a group wanted and needed to do this, if they were trying to do that, if we parceled this up, what's kind of cost are we looking at? How would, how long, where? They too are familiar with the, the physical facility in the community as well. So it's trying to get a little ahead of that for the exact same reasons you're thinking. So if you were to put it back together into more of apartments or individual rooms, how would that work? And how much would that cost? Yeah, yep, 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 yep. Exactly. We're totally with you. The other thing that's nice about this building, and as opposed to, again, I'm going to compare this to our Knox campus, there are things like restrooms on each floor, which is nice. That's not the case in our Knox campus. You know, we would love to be able to utilize the basement facility for some other organization. It doesn't have any restrooms on them. So that's problematic, as opposed to each one of these floors does. Sir.
What's your goal for timeline?
Yeah, no, appreciate that. So the question was timeline, or are you? Obviously, we're looking at this process now, but there is no strict timeline for us. Now, this is, as we said, one of our options, it's continue doing business as usual. It's not the most effective one, but it is certainly an option. So where there is no specific, we're not saying that we have to have this done in a one-year cycle. Obviously, the sooner that we get to it, the better off we will be. The one thing that we are saying to ourselves, we cannot have any disruption in our academic delivery. So no matter what we end up doing, if it, if somebody wants to buy the building, we have to have time to go find ourselves another place to be and to get our, our elements transitioned. If we do have a third party that has a different vision, we don't want a disruption of our students having access to the building, utilizing the space. We actually, and Sarah Morrison, our dean of enrollment, was very proactive with this. We sent notice to our current students that this is transpiring, but it will not interrupt their academic experience, and it won't interrupt any future students. Will they come here? We can't guarantee that 100%. Will they have a place to go in the community? Yes, yes. And without disruption. We're not going to close our operations for a semester or anything to that extent. So, but we don't have a strict timeline because we don't know how this is going to play itself out. The good news is we have flexibility, you know, because of that, because of it. We have this, and it's beautiful. It's just really big. Sir.
Pulling off some of what you just said, have you identified anywhere else in the community that you would move to or like to move to if that was the option?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Obviously, we're already contemplating and visualizing where that could be. If there are already connections with current education partners, that makes sense for us, is to go where, where we're already connected. Things like our healthcare providers. Are there opportunities of space within their network where, if we were doing training and development onsite? If there were education partners at the K-12 system that were looking for and had a need to have space filled, we'd look at them first. We're not close to any of it. I don't think we're looking to necessarily go back to where we were, but, because we've kind of outgrown that. But we will be very open across the board. It just needs to be something that isn't going to take an awful lot of renovation for us to get that up and running as well. Appreciate, that was a good question. You're going to have to eat some more of those cookies because Grandma Berry's secret recipe, that's, we use that for today. But you don't get any more cookies till you ask more questions or give some more insight. Ma'am.
Would you consider partnering with the local, like, colleges, like universities and stuff? I remember seeing the sign that was like Muskingham University.
Yeah, that's a very interesting question.
Knox County, you have like, not red and azur.
So the question was, would we consider any other higher education partner or institution? Heck yeah, we would. And we had, to your point, when the building first opened, Muskingham College had a presence in the building. They were running some academic programs here. That's why you remember their name on some of the signage. They since had moved away from that design. They chose not to do that process or program any longer. We're not close to that. It's not, oh my goodness, a competitor organization is coming in. Nope, nope, nope. If they are a viable option, that we're not duplicating. I wouldn't want a secondary nursing program coming in, and we need to fill our cohort and expand those. But there's a myriad of education providers that could supplement some of that. We would certainly welcome that and have that conversation with them. Some of where we know students are going already, like to Kent State, we may say to them, would you have interest in having a satellite operation? And it could be a part of that here. Not all opposed to that, not at all. Sir.
Dane Chau, Board of County Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
We were meeting previously and discussed the parking arrangement in the parking lots. At the $6 million figure, what goes with that, that figure?
David, do you want to take that one, my friend?
That's a great question, and there is some property. We own everything across the street here. We would probably talk to Roscoe Village first to protect that space, but that is part of this parcel. And the parking lot that direction now with the redesign, that's part of it, so the parking across the street, parking over there, parking behind the building, it's all connected to the building.
All with that $6 million figure? Or you, you went that?
I'm going to, I'm only going to hesitate on the parcel right across the street. I think we need to have a few more conversations.
Okay, and I understand that, yes. It's been there for years for Roscoe to utilize.
Right. How about the parking lot at 541? That is separate. That property is owned actually by several foundations. It's not actually COTC-owned, so it's restricted for our use, so that's going to be a separate conversation as well, but it's not in that $6 million.
Thank you, Dane.
No, I appreciate that. You saw me punt on that one, didn't you, Dane? Yeah, I did. You all remember that show Undercover Boss, where the guy gets in there with the woman to get in, and they're like, I'm doing stuff I don't know how to do. So I've learned many a time to go to your subject matter experts. But that's a very, very good question. Now, you all have seen, there's a lot of, there's ample parking around the facility, and so that is a blessing as well. So that helps within visualizing what this could be. And depending, again, what kind of group came in, there may be some, let's just say there are apartments that come up. We might want to very much designate parking spaces for those individuals. Because that's one thing, if you live in an apartment, you want to make sure you got a place to always have as a parking space. You know, you don't want a bunch of college students be like, you're parking in my damn spot. So our students right now are very spoiled because they don't pay for any parking. It's free to them at all of our campus locations, and we would maintain that standard, but there are sometimes restrictions. You know, we have a faculty and staff yellow line, stripes already. We could certainly make, green stripes are for people who live here or work here or whatever that might be. Appreciate that, my friend. Sir.
Dr. Bear. All right. In case, thinking in terms of COTC potentially would sale then lease back the bottom two floors. So let's think from the reciprocal of that, from a possibility right here. What if COTC continued to own it, assuming there's no money owed on it right now? And COTC, I know this is not the true mission, but COTC renovate the third and fourth floor into luxury apartments?
All right, so Bob, that, that's a potential, that is probably potential for, in terms of our desirability, we aren't real estate agents. We're not leasing or landlord type of agencies.[1775.82] Doesn't mean it can't happen, right?
Doing something like that, but just trying to think of some type of solution.
Absolutely. It's not without, it's not beyond the realm of possibility. It is something that if you see David's face, he's kind of giving you the look. He's giving you the look. Now, does that mean it could, yes, it could absolutely be a viable option. Depending again, now on who comes forward and what they have to say. So yes, it would, let's make that 4.2. So no, I appreciate that, Bob, very much, very much. Ma'am.
I, I just wanted to remark that I think that there's a wonderful website at Shea Hess that shows this property off very nicely and, and might make the viewer think, oh, I could buy something and turn it into apartments.
Marion, thank you.
Very robust website.
It is, and I appreciate that. If you all are interested yourselves, take a look at it. It really does parcel this and break it into operational parts. It gives some history, it gives some process. It's very graphically engaged. If people that you know might want to see that, refer them to it as well. Brandon is also available to talk to anyone. If you all have any questions for him, I will make sure to get you the contact information for him. He's a very good guy. The other thing I like about him specifically, Brandon himself has been on the Board of Trustees at Zane State. So he understands who we are and what we do. He gets a little bit more of that about the two-year college operations and processes. So it's a little bonus, you know, it's not necessarily anything that we said you had to have, but boy, does that help. And Marion, thank you very much. You're absolutely right. That website is robust and very nice, very nice. Sir.
Is there a possibility of some sort of direct collaboration with the newer businesses coming in such as Intel, the drone company? Where they would use the facility for their direct specific training?
It could be industry-led, yes. And now if, if an industry partner came and said, we want a training and development center and we want to do a collaborative relationship with you on some of that. That is absolutely a possibility. For those of you who are probably catching and keeping up with things, Intel, right now, that's probably not going to happen anytime soon. Given where things stand with and for them, but they're just one cog in a wheel. You know, we had never heard of Andoril before, before they said, guess what? We're coming into your service region. Okay, well, that's good to know. And yes, we're going to learn now more about combat training. So we were told today, a little bit cat out of the bag. We were contacted by Jobs, this is Jobs Ohio. I get my jobs in family services and Jobs Ohio, this is Jobs Ohio. There, we're in a finalist process to possibly land a large biopharmaceutical company in this region as well. Again, could be something we learn to adapt to from our engineering perspective with a little bit of caveat on some pharmaceutical type of work. Who knows who's coming down the pipe? Right now, candidly, our region, our sector, this is a hot commodity. So we're keeping our eyes and our ears open and learning very quickly. I didn't know a damn thing about semiconductors, not a thing about them until we became more partnered. And in less than two years, we had an academic program. My son graduates from that program this spring. He's not going to work for Intel now, but actually he's had four places that he can work at instantly, should he choose to do so. All I told him, Russ, is you have to get out of my house. I don't care where you go, but you can't stay here anymore. So, but the opportunities are almost unlimited. They really are right now. This is a good time to be in this sector. So yes, industry-related component could be a viable option. Dave?
To that point, we are definitely connected to this team before it all.
Yeah, that's the one thing, just so everybody knows, from the formal network within economic development and such within the county, we are very connected to that process. And it's a mutually beneficial relationship. So they're giving us some thoughts and perspectives. We're giving them some ideas and suggestions as well. So we will maintain that relationship. We will stay highly connected to. So Amy, if you hear, here's group A who wants to move into the community. They're looking for a small space. Maybe they don't need a large space. That's what happened when we had this conversation in Knox. People are like, oh, you could subset and subdivide this? Because I don't need a whole floor, but I could use a fourth of that floor and have a storefront or something, whatever that might be. Yes, we would be certainly open to consider that, very much so. All right, it's nearing the four o'clock hour. Does this make sense? Does this make a little more sense? Does this help illuminate a little bit about what's happening, why and how, what we're doing and what way and what fashion? We wanted you to kind of know where the college is overall, where things are at each of our regional sectors, where things are in this physical building as well. One thing I can lead and end on is our commitment to Koshakton is steadfast. We will not be abandoning our post. It's just where is our post going to be? You know, and in what fashion? So we will be a part of this community for the long haul. The other thing, oh, I almost forgot to tell you, as part of this overall strategic plan, the one thing that we found that we were missing, you remember back in the day, all of our regional campuses had a manager onsite. They physically worked and live kind of in the community sector. We can't afford to do that because that's significant, but we are doing at least something that's second best. We're hiring a dean for, we're calling it outreach, engagement and strategic partnerships. That dean will also be responsible for being on all of our campus sites regularly, consistently. He will be, or she, depending on who was hired, will be here at least once every two weeks, working from this site, learning, living, understanding what's happening. What do we need to be plugged into? Who should we be talking with? So it's not just a happenstance at times. And we had this great idea that we were going to do this as a collective. And pre-COVID, that was working fairly well. Post-COVID, it fell apart because we were everywhere then, just trying to put things back together. But something strategic now, having a person representing the college consistently. So if Amy, you're like, who the hell I talk to if we want, somebody wants to talk about this apart? This will be our connector for that. That person will be consistently here and meeting with many of you individually and learning more again about what we have to rebuild our relationship across the lines. Thank you for listening and thank you for sharing. We really appreciate it. You're welcome to stay. We still have the room for a half an hour. You are more than welcome to enjoy some of Grandma Berry's secret recipe cookies. Now, I was told by Priscilla, Priscilla, where are you? Priscilla is my new executive assistant. I don't know if you all have met her. Jan retired on me. I couldn't believe it. I know, I know. Priscilla's great. We actually stole her from the Ohio State Columbus campus. She worked in the College of Veterinary Medicine, but she's been great. She told me that was actually Priscilla Horning's secret recipe cookie. So you guys enjoy. Thank you very much for being a part of, we really appreciate it.